This Tuesday, February 4th. D, please call.
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Ann Parks notified us she could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under announcements tonight, WSU Pullman Campus has already announced that they are going to be closed for tomorrow. Let's see, we got a whole bunch of students from Pullman High School on civics class. Welcome. You obviously aren't closed tomorrow, right? Are you just?
Yeah, so far.
You hope you are. Shall we be here tonight just to try and cheer you on? Okay, anyway, welcome. But anyway, they're closing operations tomorrow. Normal operations resume on Thursday, so there's no classes for tomorrow at WSU Pullman Campus. Nothing about the high school yet? We'll have to wait for that one. Pullman Public Schools 2020 bond and levy ballots are due on Tuesday, February 11th. Contact Whitman County Elections Office if you have any ballot questions. Everyone's invited for a presentation by Dr. Martin Paul, PhD, WSU professor emeritus in biochemistry and basic medical sciences, on 5G, What the Wireless Industry Doesn't Want You to Know, 7 o'clock tomorrow at the University of Idaho College of Law. Every third Saturday through April, Pullman Winter Market at Brawlsford WSU Visitor Center. Next one will be February 15th, from 10 until 2. Pullman's Past Comes Alive at the Pullman Depot Heritage Center at Whitman Street, the end of the building. They're open to visitors from 10 till 4 on Saturdays. And that next one will be February 8th. You can come see new displays, plans for the future, exhibits, local history, and beautifully crafted wooden train set. For more information, go to pullmandepot.org. Today, we had the MOU signing there for the Pullman Downtown Association. Kurt Schultz, Tom Handy, Marie Dimkowsky, myself, we're all there, along with a number of council members, Pat, Ann, Eileen, Nathan, Brandon. So we all thank you for that. And then finally, looking for excuse to have some fun and doing some good and worthy cause, that's, you can get out now for the Whitman County Humane Society's Annual Football and Yappy Hour, to be held Saturday, February 22nd, at the SEL Event Center. There's all the announcements tonight. Next comes is the Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. The councils had a chance to look these over ahead of time. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? Laura McAlune, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14, 2020, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $245,143.57. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $925,572.77. A motion to approve various dispersments totaling $815,507.65. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $2,822,718.3. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $134,465.5. A motion to approve various dispersments totaling $858,787.50. And a motion to approve a lodging tax grant to the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication in an amount up to $1,750 for the 45th Annual Murrow Symposium, which will be held March 22nd through 24th, 2020.
And there's number nine.
I do not have a nine on my agenda.
I'll read it. Motion to recommend expenditures of $35,749 from the Sherrod Family Memorial Fund for maintenance for the Neo Public Library Heritage Edition 2020. Council, I think, Pat, you want to have number eight pulled, okay? Is there any other item that would like, the council would like to have out for discussion? Then the consent agenda consists of items 1 through 7 and 9. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, real quick, I don't have nine on here either.
It showed up earlier, but now it's not showing up on me.
Yeah, nine's gone now.
So, you're the city attorney. Do we take action even though it's there and I have it in print?
I only looked at the private copy.
It was. This is where I like to have things in the copy, just to make sure.
Well, it's, you know, it's like, it's like Field of Dreams, you know, when they ask, "Is this paradise?" And he says, "No, this is Iowa."
Oh, okay.
It's on the print.
Too soon?
It's on the print, so we can go ahead. Okay. So, again, I've already stated items 1 through 8, excuse me, 1 through 7, and number 9. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we go to number 8, Pat.
So, in light of some of the discussion that we got at our last council meeting, I wanted to bring up a couple of points relative to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee grant request. And one of those points is that what comes before the council is what has been reviewed and recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for approval by the council. The council always has the option to approve it as it's submitted, to change the amount that's submitted, either higher or lower, and that it is done at the discretion of the council. And so, I think that's important for everybody to understand if these items are going to continue to be pulled from the consent agenda, that it is most appropriate for discussion to occur and review to occur and a change to be made, should that be warranted. So, having said that, we do have some things that we're going to be looking at based on, again, information coming from the last council meeting, and that being that with the help and guidance of our city attorney, we'll be looking at the criteria scoring list to make sure that we have the right information appropriately identified to the way the grants are presented, and also if there are different kinds of grants. So, for example, operational versus those for advertising or marketing purposes, that we'll look at whether or not the same form would be appropriate for whatever the specific use would be for the grant. So, that's something that we will be looking at in the future. And so, having said that, before we get to the actual item under discussion, is there, are there any other questions that fellow council members might wish to raise here?
So, I'll just, I'll make a comment. I think it would be prudent to, and I still think it's fair, I still think everybody follows the same process, you know, when they apply for a grant, to have it go through that same process. But the statute does allow for different types of things, including facilities, you know, for a city-owned or operated facility, to have a different scoring form, right? So, we don't have to put NA on these. We can do it within that sphere, you know? I think that would be wise. It'd be easier to have oversight and accountability on all of those things. I think that'd be smart to do, yeah.
So, as I say, we would, in going forward, with that, we would be looking to the guidance and assistance of our city attorney to make sure that we are following the regulations of the RCW as well, so.
Any comments you would like to make more on that?
Nope. I'm happy to work with LTAC to review their grant review process.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. So, before you, you do have a motion to approve a lodging tax grant to the Edward R. Murrow College of Communications in the amount up to $1,750 for the 45th Annual Murrow Symposium, which will be held March 22nd to the 24th. You've all had an opportunity to review the selection criteria checklist. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just in regards to the award letter, it appears that this has already gone out.
No.
No. It'll go out tomorrow.
It's out after council.
The letter that I received in the packet says it was dated January 29th, and the city council approved it on the 21st, so this is not the letter. It hasn't gone out already. We don't send a letter until we approve it.
No.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure we're not having something go out before we approve it, because that's what this says.
Yes. Okay. Did you not tell me too that they actually asked?
Mr. Sorensen, to better answer your question.
And then, also identify yourself, Brittany.
My name's Brittany Kristen. Do I need to give my title or anything? Tourism director.
Good, yeah.
Okay. This is only my second time at council, so hi. Anyway, when I create that after the Lodging Tax Committee discusses it, I write it for the next council meeting, and my understanding is it's going to be on the 21st, but it was canceled. So, that's why in the current packet you have, that's what it says, but it will be updated and corrected before it's sent out, just so you're aware of how we do that.
My suggestion would be not to date the letter until we approve it when it's in our packet.
Okay. I can work with D to make that happen, because I'm the one who sends the word document straight to her, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Not so that they asked for more money and the whole committee actually reduced the amount they were pressing?
They did. They asked for $3,000, and that was mainly to be used for advertising, spokesman review, Seattle Times, I almost said the Post-Intelligence or the...
Online, are they still online?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the Evergreen, as well as social media advertising. And given, there indicate, the grant indicated that there would be possibly 60 people coming from out of town. The target audience for this particular event is the students, obviously, and people that are here already. So, that's why we looked mainly at what the cost might be involved with well-distant advertising. So, the Seattle Times, obviously, being the biggest player in that. We did look at the percentage. They scored 70 out of 90 points on the checklist, and that percentage, I think, was 80%, maybe?
77.7.
Okay. So, 78%.
Okay.
And 78% of 3,000 is $2,340. We approved the grant for $1,750, just taking into account, again, the demographic audience of that. So, again, like I said the last time, there's always going to be some subjectivity in making these decisions, and, you know, we would look to Laura, again, for more advice and guidance as to lower the probability of subjectivity in making these awards, but that still is open to review and continued suggestion.
Any further questions, Jill? Eileen?
Thank you. That pretty much answered my question about what the money was going to be used for. But, just in terms of the material that's in our packet, haven't we, in the past, had a more complete, had the actual application in our packets, in our city council packets?
We have.
So, is, would that be helpful for council to?
I don't.
Brittany, is there any further comments you want to make on that? And again, Brittany, is it tourism?
We're steps ahead.
Yes, I'm reaching those 10,000 steps. So, I do submit the application to D, the Request for Council Action Form, along with the letter that Mr. Sorensen referenced. And then if it's over a certain amount, which I believe is, if they're asking more than $5,000, a copy of their budget, I think, needs to be included with that as well. And I can go back and look on the RFCA that I submit to, to clarify that, but that's what I submit, so.
Also, Quinn, we have those materials in the packet. Like I say, I know we have in the past. I mean, I'm the only clunker that's still using paper, but...
But, did I just hear you say, Brittany, that if it's over a certain dollar amount, that's when the whole thing gets included? So, maybe that's why we see some and not all.
And it's under the amount, the total application was only for $3,000.
Okay. Sure. I think, I think one reason it would be helpful to get that is not only to, not necessarily for oversight of LTAC, but to see in what ways these organizations anticipate that they'll get X number of people, or it'll provide some benefit. I mean, just hypothetically, I can imagine the Murrow Symposium folks, it could be taking people out to dinner, you know, restaurant here in Pullman, or whatever. I think that would be helpful to see what they expect, you know, their draw to be, even if they only ask for 3,000. And Murrow has come up last year, the year before, because they did hit that 5,000, so I'm not sure why they asked for it last, but I think that would be helpful to see.
Well, this year, they have a big-name NBC.
They do.
News anchor coming, so they probably don't think they need to advertise as much as they've had in the past for somebody that maybe nobody knew.
Yeah.
There. We'll make sure that the packet has all the materials for even the sub $5,000.
There's no reason not to.
That's an easy fix. Okay?
Yeah, I didn't know that they asked for 3,000, we only gave 1,750. So, I mean, just at least knowing the amount that they asked for, and then seeing that we didn't give them the whole thing because of scoring or whatever, that's helpful. Knowing what they originally asked for is good to know.
All right.
And again, it's open to, you know, council review in terms of whether you feel that this is an appropriate amount, and if you want that adjusted, higher or lower. But the one caveat that I would make on this one is that we have some time limitations. Is that correct, if we send it back, if we choose to change the amount?
If the council is considering awarding an amount different than what the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommends, then you simply make a motion to that effect and have Councilmember Wright take that information back to the LTAC and get their input on it. If they don't provide it, you have to wait at least 45 days. If they don't provide any input, you can just adopt. If they agree, you would, again, adopt their recommendation. It just depends on...
So, it's a 45-day wait period?
That you have to give them at least 45 days to consider what you are considering doing. And once you do that, then you're free to take action.
So, the caveat that I have then here with this particular request is that since we're looking at March 22nd to the 24th, and if they have to negotiate with newspapers and, you know, whatever the leave time is on that kind of thing, that that would bypass that window of opportunity that they would have to be able to do that. So, that would be the one caveat that I would have to any adjustment here.
Any further questions? Then do I hear a motion from you?
You need the motion from me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, or anybody, but I figured since you pulled it, it would be logical for you to do it, okay?
So, move to approve the lodging tax grant to the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication in the amount of up to $1,750.
Second.
Moving second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. First item up is to determine, and that's the council prerogative here, a motion to nominate the mayor pro tem. And D has provided you with a list of who was the alternate mayor pro tem, and who was the mayor pro tem, and you can see from down below as to who has served last. And do I have a chance to look at that over? Do I hear a motion as to nominate the mayor pro tem?
I have a motion to move our alternate mayor pro tem, Dan Records, to mayor pro tem.
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we need to get an alternate mayor pro tem. That's item number two on your agenda.
I would nominate Brandon as that's one.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second.
I've already sent my previous motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to item number three on our agenda, Complete Streets Draft Ordinance. And everything is a draft policy, and you have that before you tonight, so Kevin Gardner, sir, public works director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The city's current list of priorities and goals includes the following under strategic, long-term planning, dependable infrastructure. Pass a Complete Streets ordinance that enhances multimodal access on Airport Road from Terraview Drive. To that end, staff have prepared a draft Complete Streets ordinance and policy, which are included in your packets. The ordinance and policy would apply to all city street projects in Pullman. The draft ordinance and policy were presented to the Planning Commission last month. We also posted the ordinance and policy on the city website in advance of the Planning Commission meeting to provide an opportunity for public comment. Public comments received from those efforts are included in your council packet. Combining the comments received, there seem to be two main themes, that a committee evaluating Complete Streets projects for the city should consider having a community member or members, as well as city staff, on the committee. The policy should emphasize that snow and ice control are an important component of Complete Streets and maintenance of sidewalks, et cetera, vegetation, and so forth. Based on these two themes, staff revised the draft policy to have the city CIP committee provide input on city Complete Streets projects, and we also added some language related to snow and ice control to the draft policy, and those are shown in a legislative draft, so you can see the changes that we made from the first go-around. The CIP committee is made up of council members and planning commission members, and also a member-at-large from the public. So, seemed like an ideal choice for helping oversee the policy. In related, parallel efforts, the CBD master plan will be wrapping up soon. This master plan includes multimodal elements in downtown. We are also currently requesting statements of qualification for a bike pad master plan for the city, which is also a council goal. The draft ordinance and policy are presented to council tonight to solicit comments and feedback. Staff expects to return to council in early March with a final version for action, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments?
So, yeah.
Okay.
From conversations that I've had, and also viewing this, great first draft, I want to continue seeing us fine-tune some of this. I think this is absolutely moving in the right direction. I feel like you've got a handle on some of the aspects that we really want to make sure that we've got, but there are some good points brought up in some of the comments or emails, what is best practice, you know, out there. It doesn't always have to be, you know, a bike lane, that doesn't, you know, it's not one of the things that necessitates every project, right, that we have to have one of those. But what works for us, and making sure all of that is put into the final draft, I think is really important. I mean, I would like to see it done as a quality job, not in a hurry to get it done. So, I think the timeline is right to continue to allow us to receive some of this and allow council as well to be able to go through and make sure that what is in here is going to match what the strategies are that we have, and does it match best practice? And certainly, the cultural changes that we've had, you know, the favorability toward all forms of transportation, walking, cycling, making sure ADA or accessible issues are taken into account. So, I think it's a great start, and I'm really happy to see this moving forward, and it does open us up for some potential money as well, which I think is important to remember that we might be grant-eligible. So, kudos. I know, you know, some of us have been, you know, chirping about this for a while, so I appreciate you and your staff moving forward on this.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Dan?
I'd like to see the changes in the year-round accessibility piece that was put in there and the snow and ice control. But I think one thing we could add as a companion piece to that would be as one of the performance metrics, looking at maintenance of accessible features of sidewalks and controls year-round. So, looking at, you know, the curb ramps and the push buttons for crosswalks, like, are those accessible during snow events? And are they being maintained? Because that could help the city plan better for a different resource allocation based on some performance metrics if we're gathering that.
That's consent. Beth?
And my question is pretty basic, and that is, what are the startup costs associated with getting this initiated? Are they significant? Are they just absorbed in day-to-day business? How does this work going forward?
In practice, once we implement this, we're, we still have the same pot of money that we have for street projects, right? So, a lot, a fair amount of the street fund is what I will call non-discretionary. It's street lights, it's traffic lights, it's snow and ice control, it's just things we just have to do. And so, the discretionary part are street resurfacing, sidewalk infill, sidewalk repair, could be a new bike lane, it could be, you know, some multimodal feature. So, the way I see this going is, as we look to design streets or redo streets so that they're multimodal, there'll be some trade-offs. And so, all the money won't be being put into street resurfacing, so that won't go quite as far, because we're going to spend some money on sidewalks or bike paths or that sort of thing. So, I don't know that there's any cost above what we already do, it's just going to kind of reallocate it a little bit. And later this spring, or maybe late winter, early spring, our city engineer's going to come and present the payment rating study that we've done, and then we're going to follow that up with just a discussion with council about street funding and what potential opportunities there are. So, that would be a time to evaluate how much we're currently spending and whether we want to spend some more money. So, that's, I hope that answers the question.
And the other part of that question is, at least with my looking through this, there seem like there maybe would be some additional hard labor costs involved with snow clearing and, you know, more than what we're doing right now. And so, would that be kind of absorbed as well?
Yeah.
Because thinking we're going to, we still have some limited resources, so how are we going to offset that requirement?
Sure. Just kind of thinking off the cuff here, for the things that the city maintains, the has, we'll still do that. That's a cost we have now, so we'll continue to do that. Where we may have to enhance our snow and ice control operation would be like around the ADA ramps or the push buttons. So, there may be some, you know, a little bit of additional cost there, but I wouldn't expect it to be significant.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Kevin.
Eileen?
I think, including the CIP committee on this, I think that was, that's really brilliant. And I hope to continue on that committee, so I'm looking forward to being involved on this. I think we've been talking about this for like 10 years, haven't we?
Complete Streets?
Yeah.
I don't think, I've been talking about it for 10 years. It's been close, but, but Brent Carper on the Planning Commission also mentioned the CFP committee, which he's a member of as well, and so I had thought about that before the Planning Commission, so it just kind of was a good idea, I think, all.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Well, serving as chair of the Transportation Improvement Board that does grant money for the Complete Streets, which then I can't advocate for our particular one, but this is something that we've been talking about for quite some time, and a matter of fact, the former TIB engineer, Gloria, who was here, I even walked her through that particular place that we think we can do it, which is Airport Road, and go into the new terminal, because we have enough room there on both sides where we can get multimodal. And then coming right off Terraview, it just seemed like the logical place to take it right there. And she said, "Yeah, that sounds like a pretty good spot." Of course, then we have to have the ordinance, we have to have all these different things in place before you can actually go for the grant. And there's a possibility, I mean, we've issued out $100,000 grants to different places. Obviously, Initiative 976, the transportation, has had an impact, as we all heard in Olympia last week, there's a $450 million hole that they've put things in pause trying to take care of. But, anyway, it's a moving in the right place, and I gave Kevin tonight, we approved at the TIB meeting on Friday, Airway Heights, Arlington, and Wenatchee will be doing Leadership Academy on Complete Streets. We have some really good people over in Wenatchee who've done Complete Streets. They've actually helped East Wenatchee, they have helped some other cities in terms of getting this thing implemented without overcommitting, and then obviously being in some problems. So, I know we'll be working with that.
Mayor, can I, may I add something? The one thing that I, I think we do need to talk about accessibility issues as part of this, but I wouldn't worry about the cost so much as it's tied to this. I mean, I think when I hear of the accessible ramps and stuff, I think that's something we need to be doing regardless.
Any worries?
Yeah. So, I wouldn't worry too much about seeing that as a deficiency of this, and I know when I've read through the Parks Plan, Parks Facilities and Recreation, I guess is the full the full name now, I know that that's something that they're looking at is improving their snow removal and some of that. So I just, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out, throw that part out there. That I think we can kind of, even though it's in here, separate those in terms of our worry on that.
So you asked for a discussion, Nathan?
Just a comment. I appreciate you bringing up the pavement rating as well. I know that's something that I've been chirping, is that now?
I guess it is.
Chirping about, but because I do see that in the long run, that will have a savings looking at a needs-based in all approach. But I appreciate you mentioning that, Kevin.
No further discussion. So we've got some comments?
Yep.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Next item is number four, the discussion item as well, for City Safety Program Grant Application to Washington State Department of Transportation. Clayton Forsman is our Deputy Public Works Director.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to take the opportunity tonight to inform you about a grant program that is currently accepting applications through Friday, March 6. The program is called the City Safety Program. It's administered through WashDOT, and it awards federal highway safety improvement program funds to cities and towns in order to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes on city streets using proven countermeasures. Staff previously had submitted a grant application during the last grant cycle back in 2018. However, we fell just short of being selected. This year's grant program has a new prerequisite. It's called a local road safety plan. This is a planning process to identify and evaluate projects that ensure the highest priority safety needs are addressed at the highest priority locations. The plan has the following key elements. First, a thorough evaluation of the five-year crash history. This is provided by WashDOT. Next, the identification of common factors that contributed to those serious and fatal injury crashes. Next, identifying other locations in the city's roadway network where these same factors are present. And then last, proven countermeasures will be identified to address the portions of the roadway network that are the highest priority based on the presence of those common factors. Also included will be an engineering analysis to validate and verify that each of the selected countermeasures will be sufficient. Staff has currently been working with DN Traffic Consultants to help develop the local road safety plan. Once the plan is finished, we will, our intent is to prepare and submit a application to the grant program. At this time, we are requesting input and direction from council regarding our plan. And if you're amicable to this, staff will bring a completed grant application to council for authorization at the February 25 council meeting. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions? Yes.
Clayton, because this is being awarded from WashDOT, I mean, I think we have a pretty good idea of what WashDOT feels is safer. I mean, they've spoken and written at length about things like traffic circles instead of, you know, other things. So last time, did you say our last grant request was, it was not successful? So as we put this forward, I mean, does that, does that push us toward any specific kind of planning that would be more favorable to WashDOT, like traffic circles or, you know, as a very, very general or broad? Give us, I guess, some latitude.
Don't get me wrong, I like traffic circles.
Brandon's really nice right now, because they're also called roundabouts. That's another term that's used for him, so.
Slash roundabout.
And we saw plenty of an Olympia.
Oh, yeah.
So really by following the road safety plan, the projects that will be developed by analyzing that crash data, that's the step that, like I said, it's a prerequisite now. So it's a, it's a way for WashDOT to verify that the projects we're submitting for are going to address those crashes. So whether, whether the countermeasure is a roundabout or reflectorized backplates on signals, you know, whatever those common factors are, that's what they want. They wanted to see us do that analysis to identify that we're spending the money in the most high priority locations and proven countermeasures that will address those citywide. So just because a crash might have happened at one intersection, if there's another intersection that has common factors, we would look at maybe a project to look at both of those before another accident happens at this other intersection, if that kind of makes sense.
No, it does. And I did kind of wonder, you know, the roundabouts slash traffic circles, whatever, you know, I did wonder if we, if we propose, like, here's a, here's an intersection that hasn't worked very well. We've had, we have data that support, you know, that it might be dangerous or risky or whatever. We'd like to do this project. And they look at it and say, well, that's, you know, that's not our favorite project, so we're going to deny this, you know? Or if you had any insight as to why they turned us down last time and...
It's a competitive process, so a lot of it depends on who you're going up against, how their project score compared to your, your project. Last time, there was not the local road safety plan component, so it was evaluated on a benefit-cost ratio. And even though we weren't successful, we were the top unfunded project. So we were right, I mean, we weren't at the bottom of the list, but unfortunately, they only have a certain pot of money. And the couple of projects ahead of us spent up all that money, so.
I might just tag on to that, Clayton, that the benefit cost, the reason that we came up just a little bit short is we only had a few serious and fatal accidents. And so if you're going up against a community that has more serious or fatal accidents, that's going to make their ratio look a lot better than ours. So that's a good thing.
Tough way of looking at things, so that we don't have bad, serious accidents.
So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number five has been pulled tonight because both Alan Davis and Kurt Damon are sick. So we're going to move right on to item number six, which is the council assignments for boards and commissions you have before you, a later updated version of this.
We found the charade.
The charade piece that was on the agenda on the board document.
But we already approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We found it, though.
So it slipped down or what?
Yeah.
We'll get it addressed. Well, we knew we were covered. The city attorney said we were okay. All right. So now we go to the council assignment boards and commissions. And again, with the latest thing. Incidentally, February 11th, next week, we will be meeting as a council. Originally, we had down there pending or, so just know that. And the Parks and Commission report will be there for February 11th. So just put that on your agenda, February 11th, we are meeting. And so, and I know a couple of people, I know Eileen sent some comments back on the Parks thing. I know I sent some comments. So anything else you want to send back to them, they'll still have another week to prepare. And Clayton, I don't know whether that would move your grant report up or whether you could, if you wanted to get it in earlier, February 11th would also be a possibility. I know you're going for February 25th, but...
We'll stay on that one.
Okay. No problem. Just give me another option. All right. So now comes your discussion here in terms of board and the commission. Brandon, you said earlier this evening, you had a suggestion about where this, maybe in the future, we could do this under another, when we had our council retreat.
Correct.
Why don't you just talk about it a little bit?
Okay. Well, I thought it would be a good idea to, it's very administrative, you know, we're looking over our own work calendars and trying to see when things fit. And I mean, this might sound a little crass, but posturing for some, you know, committees or things, I, you know, I thought that might be a good time to do that. It's still open.
Different ones, and maybe on the board or something like that, and figure out where you've been and who served on this the last time.
Anybody else with that discussion. That was just an idea I had for, you know, annual retreat or, or, you know, something the next time around.
And then, of course, we would take it up in a full, regular, a public meeting.
We would adopt it.
When we adopt it, yeah. Okay. So I know some people, Nathan, you got by. It's only one committee here.
No.
I serve another.
No, no.
I know you have other ones.
Sweden is listed under mine, and I believe somebody, it might have been Council Member Weller that took Sweden. Okay.
Yeah, took Sweden?
Yeah. So Sweden was moved to, yeah, I'm still listed as Sweden. I'm not on Sweden.
So we take Brandon up as Sweden. And your time on capital improvements has been just the one year?
Just the one year, and I am delighted with my other assignments. I've sort of made those my baby and...
You definitely have. And we heard at Olympia, a number talks about solid waste and recycling and other things. And Seattle was saying that they were still taking some of the things that we're not taking. They were still taking glass.
Well, I love to tell this story. The situation in Seattle is unique in that they actually have a glass remanufacturing plant that is like less than a mile from the recycling depot that they arrive at. They, I mean, it's just like right down the street and has been for decades. And so they can do that because they don't have the weight and transportation issues that other communities have.
As far as I know from Ann, she was, did you hear anything more from Ann about the committee she's on? She's been fantastic on Audit Committee, I know that. And so has Dan. Both have been fantastic there. But I don't know if they want to continue on that.
She, Ann chatted with me this afternoon, and she said that she wanted to stay.
Okay.
Yeah, we've kind of got a good thing going.
Yeah. And I know our finance director is very pleased with the, yes, there he is. Okay, he gave a thumbs up in the back with Dan and Ann doing a great job on Audit Committee. And that's a committee that comes through and takes a look at everything that's been sent out in terms of things. So it's a very important position. Okay?
Three council members.
You see down here, we have per policies, per council decisions, per mayor appointments, so.
So I have very much enjoyed my time on Palouse Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
That involves a trip, doesn't it, usually?
Yeah, it's quarterly, and there's one down in Clarkston. And then we do stuff here in Pullman at the Business Park, the WSU.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Yeah, the director, Sean, I've really enjoyed my interactions with him. It's a really interesting organization, and you get folks from all over the region. So there's four counties involved in that. Now, that's been, that's been good. And it's only quarterly.
Well, the best part about, they've actually done some projects in the last couple of years that really have impacted WSU students and drivers. And you see the signage on 26, you see it on 195. I've really been impressed on, because I know I've been part of that group, too, and we started median Pullman High School, so.
Yeah, a huge shout-out for them. They do the Palouse driver safety.
Right.
They also did a, they do a lot of studies, so they'll spend money and get really good studies done. They did a safe route to school study for this area. So, you know, a lot of times you can, you can take something national and you try to apply it the best you can. This was actually done meant to be local, so I thought that was really beneficial. So I'd be, I'd be great staying on RTPO unless somebody had a compelling reason to take that.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'm happy with mine.
Nathan?
After, you know, I...
I know there's a lot of, lot of groups that you're with and you're helping that are not necessarily council or city things, but you're, but you're making impacts in the community, so.
Well, and I think also that it's really important for newer members, you know, to be, to be involved. I know before I had about four different committees or three different committees I was a part of, but I'm, if everybody's happy with their, then I'm...
And you guys rotate who's in charge of the Palouse Knowledge Corps, right? There's different people there.
Well, right now, it's actually WSU is the main.
WSU is?
Yeah.
All right.
And then Tom Lamar.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
County Commissioner.
Yeah.
Now, Pat, you want to continue on lodging tax?
And Dan and I have a pretty good tag team going, too, on left board. So...
That one meets once a month, in the mornings.
Yeah, five o'clock, 5:30.
Well, 5:30. It used to meet in the mornings at one time.
Yeah, on the second Thursday of the month.
Okay. All right. Alan and I both serve on the Volunteer Fire Relief and Penetration Board that Dee calls when we have activity. We did not have one for tomorrow, so we're good there. But, okay. Any others? Okay. With that, I didn't hear them. We will again meet on Tuesday, February 11th. So we do have a council meeting today. So I am planning to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to go into executive session to consider the selection of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase in public knowledge regarding public consideration. I'll do the public comment.
The new business?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is there any new business to come before the council? That was a very good reminder there. Thank you. Any new business to come before the council? See none. Then we will adjourn to consider the selection of site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase in public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, and the time period is 10 minutes. So at 7:46 right now, we will convene in executive session at 7:50 for 10 minutes. Thank you for being here.